All right, we're ready to get started. Thank you, everyone, for coming to the city council meeting tonight. Welcome to Spanish Fork, whether you're in the council chambers, in the city office, or watching us all over the world, in TV land, right? All over the world?
Yes.
Mayor Laufsen, we're excusing him tonight. He is watching somewhere in the world. I think it's Indiana. I think with Mrs. Mayor's family back there, so we wish him safe travels. He saw the agenda tonight. He was saddened that he had to miss this one, and we're happy to all be here. So, thanks for coming. We'd like to get started with a prayer that Chris Thompson has volunteered to give us, and then Brandon Gordon will lead us in the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful that we can meet together to conduct the business of the city. We're grateful for those who serve us in these elected positions. We pray that Thou bless them, and they'll be guided in the decisions that they have to make. We are grateful for all those who serve in the city, and for the great volunteer work that is so prevalent in Spanish Fork. We pray that Thou bless those who give it their time to make our city better, that they will have success in their endeavors, and that the activities, especially Fiesta Days, will go smoothly and well, that people will be saved, and that it will be a good experience for as many people as possible. And we say this in the name of Thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Will the audience please rise, remove your hats, and repeat the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you. Item C on our agenda is Central Utah Recreation and Parks Association Volunteer Award, and our own Mark Rush is here.
He even dressed up.
He dressed up. Look at that.
You know, if I wouldn't have, Dale would kill me.
Well, and he's not even here.
I know, but he knows things.
Oh.
He's one of the millions watching.
Yeah, right? Along with the mayor. Thanks for the opportunity to be here, City Council. I'd say Seth, but I'm gonna say Tyler. Thanks. A little bit of background, so Spanish Fork Parks and Recreation is part of the Central Utah Recreation and Parks Association, which is a subgroup of the Utah Recreation and Parks Association, which is a subgroup of the National Recreation and Parks Association. So, there's one big umbrella. The Central Utah Recreation and Parks Association is probably the premier organization in the state of Utah under the Utah Recreation and Parks Association. We really do a lot of good things throughout the community. KIRPA, is what we like to be called, encompasses most of this, all of the cities in Utah County, and we go from Delta all the way out to Vernal, and we even go down as far south as Nephi. So, we have a lot of cities that are involved in KIRPA. Every year, KIRPA has the opportunity, and the member agencies have an opportunity to recognize outstanding volunteers in their organizations. We usually do this at a dinner, which Spanish Fork hosts every year. Unfortunately for us, Heath was not able to be here for the dinner. He was on vacation, so fortunately for him, he probably had a better time than we were, than we probably could've offered him, other than a really good steak. So, we'd like to take this opportunity, Spanish Fork Recreation would, and KIRPA, to recognize Heath Langford. Heath, if you don't mind coming on up. Heath is an outstanding volunteer coach for us. He's been a volunteer coach. I got here in 2015. He was a coach then, and he's been a coach long before I got here. And it was unanimous decision when we were going through names between Bronco, Paul, and I, on who we wanted to choose, and we all felt that Heath was a really good candidate for this. He does a lot of good for the kids in the community. He doesn't just coach baseball, which is where I get to interact with him, but he coaches a lot of things. He's had a lot of his kids go through our programs. He's a true Spanish Fork person. I don't know how you wanna... He loves Spanish Fork, and he loves the programs we have, and he loves the kids that he gets to coach. So, I'm presenting Heath Langford to the city council as Spanish Fork City's KIRPA Volunteer of the Year, and we're gonna present him with this plaque from KIRPA, and we'd just really like to thank Heath from Spanish Fork Parks and Recreation. I know you guys appreciate what he does as well, and thank him for all he does, and hopefully this isn't the end of him coaching, but his kids are getting older, and he's running out of kids to coach. So, Heath, thank you so much from Spanish Fork Parks and Recreation, and from the Central Utah Recreation and Parks Association. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark.
While he's doing that, I know that there's some people here in the audience. In fact, I think we took up most of the seats that are here to honor Heath, a bunch of kids that he's coached throughout the years. So, they're here to honor him. That's it. Thank you very much, guys.
Heath, wanna speak? What do you wanna say, Heath?
Well, I'd just like to thank the Parks and Rec for recognizing me, and I think I started coaching back in 2007, when my oldest was in the fourth grade, and I'm still going. I'd like to thank my wife for supporting me. She's had to sit in the stands by herself, and... But, uh, I... Thanks for my teammates, and for Ryan. I've coached with Ryan for ten years or more, and thank you guys for being here, and for all the support that I've gotten. I didn't do this on my own. It was a lot of support from other people, so thank you for Spanish Fork and for the Rec Department.
Thanks, Heath.
Thanks, Heath. Great work. Lucky to be on the receiving end of Heath's coaching with his boy Kale playing for the Twins this year, who's got a sweet swing. We call him Lettuce, 'cause Kale is type of lettuce, or something like that, but, man, he swings a good bat. We're sure thankful he's on the Twins, and we're gonna do some damage in state, aren't we? Yeah, we're doing some damage in state. Great work. That's the secret sauce of Spanish Fork, right there, as we all know, is the volunteers, and there's a great one right there. Thanks, Heath. Next, item D, the Maple Mountain High School Welding Fabrication Team. If Jared Masick and his crew of guys here with a lot of hardware around their neck wanna stand up and tell us what they... Why they got to ride on the fire engine, again, down Spanish Fork's Main Street? That would be awesome. Thanks for coming, guys.
You wanna... Oh, is it me? All right. So, we participate in Skills USA at Maple Mountain High School. We've been fortunate enough to have a great group of kids come through the program. We've won seven state titles consecutive, and in the last five years, we've been on the podium at Nationals. Tosh, over here to my left, who is actually a former graduate. He won a bronze and a gold at Nationals, and then was... Went on to USU Eastern and just won his second gold college medal, and he is the older brother to Lad. And Lad, Sam, and Wyatt won a bronze medal last year at Nationals, and then won a gold medal this year. Out of seventy-five teams, there were probably only nine or ten that finished, or got close to finishing the project. There were only two high school teams that finished the project, or got close to finishing, and that's this guy is right here. And the project was a donation box, much like you'd see for, like, Tabitha's Way, and they're going to a company called WaterStep in Louisville, Kentucky. They help purify water and provide clean drinking water and bleach to remote third-world countries in, like, Africa, Uganda... That's in Africa. But, in South America, around the world, and so all the projects that they built in Louisville are gonna be donated to them to help gather goods, to help their cause. And so, there you go. That's what they did, and they did a fantastic job.
Way to go. Way to go. Any of you guys wanna say anything? They talk at all when they weld, or do they talk in class, or what?
They sometimes talk. Maybe that's too much of the texting.
Did you guys make your belt buckles? You did?
Every year that a team makes it onto Nationals, I've made them a Maple Mountain Welding Belt Buckle, and they wear that during their competition times. It's just something that local companies like Barber Metals helps us get those cut out, and then I weld them together. So, we're grateful for that local support, and these guys earned it.
Very cool.
Well, I guess I would like to just say, even though I was at the college this year and the last year, but I couldn't... Masick started it all, so we couldn't have done it without Masick. I know all of them feel the same way. Masick really is the hero here, so...
Very good.
You guys did all the work. I just told you what to do.
Well, congratulations, and thanks for representing Maple Mountain High School and Spanish Fork very well. We're very proud of your accomplishments and thankful you're part of our hometown. So, thanks a lot, guys. Way to go.
Good job.
Way to go.
Good job, Sam. Wyatt. Good job.
Way to go. Way to go. Jerry, thanks so much, buddy. Thank you.
Thanks.
I know the rest of the council can attest. We got to tour a local employer a few months ago, General Atomix here in town, that pleaded with the council and the mayor, basically to say, geez, if you can send us more skilled folks for our company, and I know they're not the only one in town, but you guys have a skill that obviously you've honed and worked on, and will serve you so well during your life, and, jeez, there were times where Brandon and I were sitting there saying, you guys hiring? 'Cause it sounds really good here, so...
Yeah, making airplane wings for fifteen million dollar drones.
Yeah, pretty cool stuff. Pretty cool stuff. So, bright futures ahead of you. I know I reached out to Jared with our Rotary Club to see if his class would... His upcoming class would help us with some benches or stuff like that, and he jumped at the chance and said, we'd love to help, and, boy, we know we'd get some quality work out of you guys for what you've done. So, thanks a lot for being part of the community and supporting us in every way. We appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to, let's see, public comments. Item number four. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council? That gets everybody leaving when you ask them to talk. All right, okay. Okay, with... Moving on from council comments, or, excuse me, public comments, we'll move to council comments. We'll start on the end with Councilman Argyle.
I don't think I have anything at this time.
Okay. Councilman Gordon?
Hey, thank you, Councilman Mendenhall. One of the enjoyable things I get to do is sit on a water quality board up in Salt Lake. Corey Pierce was able to attend the last meeting with me, and a lot of what we talk about is, you know, certain ways to make our wastewater cleaner as we put it into Utah Lake, and currently looking at the idea of studying why, you know, the algae bloom that's happening on Utah Lake. Was able to take a group of young men down to tour the wastewater plant, and Corey Pierce was nice enough to give us a tour, and as we laughed... I just have a few pictures of that. As we laughed, we made the comment that everyone really should go to the wastewater treatment facility. I know it sounds terrible, but to understand what happens when you flush is pretty important. And Corey was wonderful. You could see there as he's explaining to these young men the process, and showing them how the same bugs that work in your stomach are really the same kind of thing that happened in the digesters down at the wastewater plant before they clean the water and send it into Utah Lake, and Nick Hanks is water skiing on it. It's fascinating, and as I've been getting up to speed and learning about this water quality board and the different things that we're learning, we have some things that will be coming down the pipe that we'll need to do to our wastewater facility to make sure that we're getting up to speed and making sure that some of the older equipment gets replaced. And so, just appreciate Corey taking the time, not only to talk to a group of young men from my ward, but I just really appreciate all that he does and his crew down there for a very important public utility in our city. And so, not much more to report on that meeting. Received some proposals today for the garbage transfer station ground that we'll be reviewing. As you know, we're moving the transfer station to Spanish Fork near the jail, and so liquidating that land, we accepted some offers of people, possible developers, and of that ground, and so we'll be reviewing those and deciding as a board to make a recommendation as to who to sell that ground to. And then Heather Yowd from the chambers here, if she's got anything she wants to chat with us about?
I have a whole lot beyond Fiesta Days. Because of Fiesta Days, there will not be food trucks this weekend or next weekend, so keep that in mind. We want you to go out and enjoy Fiesta Days instead of the food trucks. For our new networking luncheon next week, which is on the seventeenth, it will be up at Canyon View Park. The Spanish Fork Police Department is coming to speak to us about safety for your business, not only physical, but online, and that type of a thing, so it should be pretty good. We have a ribbon cutting on July eighteenth for... Sorry, I really have a frog in my throat. For Rasmus &amp; Fine Jewelry, they are up... Yes, thank you.
Kier took a sip, but it's okay. I'm just kidding.
I came home from Japan with a cold. So, they are up by Vasa in their new facility. Our sidewalk sales for Fiesta Days will be on July twentieth, the twenty-second, and the twenty-third, and then our farmer's market will be starting this month. Yay! So, that will be the last weekend, the twenty-seventh, so that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you, Heather. The last thing I wanted to mention was Heath. We were lucky enough to have Heath as a coach of my son, and it was a well-deserved award for him tonight, and so, very, very deserving guy, very good baseball coach here in town, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. If you're okay, Kier, I'm gonna go next, and we can end on Stacy. The mayor sent some pictures to me, or to Tyler, asked if I'd go over them in this meeting. He received a tour of Intermountain Healthcare, the hospital being built that everyone can see when they come off Highway... Or, excuse me, I-15 and Highway six in town. So, going through a few of these pictures, you can see it's coming along very well, starting to be wrapped on the outside, and actually taking a physical shape that we can all imagine. Maybe some rendering of what it'll look like when it's complete, but the mayor told me to pass along of how excited... That's a pretty view right there. How excited he is as a mayor, how excited we are as a city, both city staff and a council, of the hard work, the hours, the years that went into this happening, and now the... Really, what kind of blessing that'll be. If you had a chance to read the mayor's article that was in the Daily Herald, I think a week ago now, maybe a couple of weeks, the part that stood out to me was he said, you know, there's going to be a generation of kids that are born in the next year and a half that their birth certificate will say "Spanish Fork, Utah" on it, and that's kind of a cool thing when you think about it. Chad, yours might've said Span... No, it didn't say Spanish Fork on it.
Well, you gotta go a little older than that.
A little older? Okay.
It's at the back of a wagon.
So, that's gonna be pretty neat, but just think of not only the economic benefit that's provided to our city, and you can see everything else going up around the hospital. Lowe's has started to go vertical, and some other ground that's being moved for other developments that's happening out there, and just all the exciting things that we always bug Dave Anderson's department for, of what's coming in next, and truly a blessing to have that hospital here, and Intermountain Healthcare has been great partners long before they built here to Spanish Fork City. Again, a shout-out to them every time I mention the Spanish Fork Active and Healthy Movement and Fit City. That started with a grant from Intermountain Healthcare, and has literally, in my opinion, saved lives in our city with funding initiatives for physical activity and mental health, and so we would like to welcome them and continue to be excited watching that growth happen. That's all I have today. Moving on to Councilman Scopes.
The only thing to report, we had the animal shelter board meeting this morning. The only things of note, they're taking all their books, their finance payroll, things like that. They're pulling in-house. They've been doing it out, contracting it out, and so they've got someone from Santa Quin City that'll be helping them to pull everything in, use some pay accounting services and things, but do it in-house, which will help them save money that way. And then one thing, and Junior, this is more particular in the legal realm, they talked about, and had approved, when there's like a court order for an animal that needs to be, I guess, held at the facility for a period of time because of, I don't know, a dog bite or something like that is what they referred. They actually talked about having... Billing the cities for it, 'cause if it... If the dog owner is found guilty or not guilty, or however that works out, they always... They have a problem with getting reimbursed for housing the animal for a period of time, and so they talked about charging the cities directly for that, and then if it goes against the dog owner, then the cities would then get it from the dog. And so, there's still some work to be done on that, but just so you're aware that that's what's being discussed, and... Okay. All right, so I'll take that back. Other than that, they just had a report of just the animals that they've brought in. Again, with the fireworks, they did have counsel. If you've got dogs that like to run or don't like noise, which is, what, ninety-nine point nine percent of the dogs with fireworks, just keep, you know, keep them locked up, keep track of them. We've got fireworks for at least another three months. At least that's the way it seems, anyway. Legally, not that long, but people will be firing them for quite some time, so just take care of your animals, your pets, and be safe as you enjoy this holiday month.
Thank you. Councilmember Stacy Beck, last but not least.
Okay, so July is the best time of the year, and we want to invite all of you here and in TV land, as mine calls it, to celebrate good times with us. Come on! Yee-haw! I know, I didn't take any drama lessons. I apologize. That's as good as it got.
Isn't that a little anticlimactic?
I know. Yee-haw!
That was awful.
But this is my fourth time doing this, and I know now the tag goes in the back of the hat. Right, Nick?
It does.
Yeah, the first year, Dave Anderson, I think, was texting me, like, turn your hat around, you're embarrassing us.
Now, look at me.
So, we have a lot of Fiesta Days, exciting things, and rodeo stuff to talk about, so the first people we'd like to call up is the Fiesta Days Committee. So, come on up. Steve and Carol Lee Danzy are our 2019 Fiesta Days Chair, and the co-chairs are Mike and Angie Clayson, and then Clint and Karen Mulestein. And Carol Lee, I'm gonna let you take this part over, or Steve.
Let's let Steve. Steve.
I just wanna give a big shout-out to all the volunteers, the Recreation Department, City Council, for all the stuff that they do to make this happen.
The sponsors.
Karen does an amazing job, and all the sponsors that donate.
We're excited. Lots of fun things planned, so we're really excited.
You guys have a good committee over there.
We do. Fantastic committee.
Is that all you have?
Do you want us to tell you about some of the events?
Oh, would you guys tell us more, please?
We would love to.
You guys thought I was anticlimactic, and look at these guys!
We kind of have it... We kind of have it. It's different events that we're each in charge of, and so we've kind of each picked one that we wanna... That we want to spotlight. So, I guess the event that we're really... Steve and I are really excited about is the Flag Retirement Ceremony, and it's a great way to show your patriotism and your love for the country, and that is next Tuesday at 7:30. So, come and support, and if you have any flags that need to be retired in the proper way, you can get those down to the Recreation Office, and I think here at the city office, and come out and enjoy a wonderful patriotic activity.
And any of the scouts that take part in it, girl scouts, boy scouts, cub scouts, be in full uniform.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thanks.
Well, me and Mike over some super fun events, the fireworks. Go ahead, you go first. I always do all the talking. Tell them about Pyromusical.
I don't think anybody's noticed that, ever.
I don't know.
I'll start with Pyromusical this Friday. We're really excited. Gonna be a few little things added to the fireworks show that's... If you thought it was good last year, it's gonna be better this year. We're gonna start six o'clock with food trucks. That's why they can't be down here, 'cause they're gonna be down there. We have about twenty-four of them coming this year, and then at eight o'clock, we're gonna have Ryan shoot in the rubber bands, and then I dust the fireworks, and it's gonna be good. Appreciate IHC stepped up huge for a sponsorship this year. We had a lot of other businesses step up and help us, 'cause this is a free event, 'cause a lot of businesses in Spanish Fork step up, and we love it.
Okay. And I love the end of the twenty-fourth. We have the fireworks show down at the ballpark, and we're gonna start with entertainment, the pre-show at eight o'clock, and that's gonna be Charlie Jenkins. I don't even know where to look. Am I looking at you? Just looking at everyone.
They're scary.
She likes the camera.
Charlie Jenkins, eight o'clock. Fireworks will start as soon as the rodeo's over with. It's usually about 10:30. It's kind of a late night, totally worth it. Get your nap in. Yeah, we're excited for that. Charlie Jenkins is awesome. If you haven't seen him in concert, don't miss it.
And Angie, can you just show the camera your nails? I noticed that Councilman Mendenhall's wife had the same kind of thing. Fourth of July, how much did that cost them?
I have no idea. I'll bet Mike Clayson didn't ask either.
You don't ask that to someone in front of their husband.
Don't ask that. I'm so sorry, Mike. Good thing you're a banker.
It was free. There was trade. It was a trade, right?
Well, we're excited about the baby contest. It'll be next Wednesday, July seventeenth. It'll be at the Senior Center. It starts at 3:30, and the applications are online, or they're in your... You can get the information in your Fiesta Days catalog, and we're so excited about it and to be able to see all the cute babies that are in Spanish Fork.
I just wanted to add, I think this is exciting to see our city council up here putting their cowboy hats on. I think that's pretty neat, to live in a community like that. I think it's great to see all these red shirts for "Celebrate Good Times," the black vests, all the rodeo queens and all that stuff. We live in a great community, and it's exciting to be here, exciting season to participate in this.
We're excited.
That's awesome. Before you guys go, I always like to give my thank-yous, as well as to Karen and Emily. You can see your picture in there, so you can hate that one, but these six have been awesome for the last twelve months. We have been meeting monthly, sometimes more often, recently weekly, I think. So, just a big thank you from the mayor and council specifically for your volunteerism for... It's a three-year commitment. So, if I call you the first of August out there, they should answer their phone, right? Yeah.
Run.
No, they have fun, and the friendships and the opportunity. Don't answer the door either. No. Answer my call. We have such a good time, and we're just so appreciative of you guys, and we know it's a sacrifice, but we hope it's worth it, and we thank you guys for all that you do. And then I know Steve and Carol Lee, you guys are going... You have a little announcement and introduction as well?
Yeah, we do. We would like to introduce to you our 2019 Fiesta Days grand marshals, and it is Richard and Anna Lee Johnson, and they are both pillars of our community. Richard is a lifelong resident, and Anna Lee's been here a lot of years, too. And there's a list of... There's a list a mile long of wonderful accomplishments that they have done, but I'm going to just spotlight a few. Richard is a Vietnam veteran. He was served as County Commissioner, where he was instrumental in getting the county jail here, which has been really a big, a neat thing for Spanish Fork, because it's kind of, we've had a lot of growth in that north end of town. One of my favorite things that I think that they have done is that they started the Freedom Walk, and that, in your magazine, it tells a lot about that, but what a neat thing to instill patriotism in our youth, and just to have good ideas like that come together and have it be such a benefit to our community. Let's see, they've raised a wonderful family. Their kids, they've instilled a life of service into their kids too. A lot of them serve in our community also, and we are just thrilled to have them, and we just know that we couldn't have made a better choice for people to honor and respect this season.
Thank you, Karen.
You can bring these to all the activities.
We're both riding the truck. Thank you.
If you guys want to say anything, so great.
Please, Richard, yeah.
Well, it's definitely an honor to be recognized as Grand Marshals, and we just feel thrilled to be part of the Fiesta Days program and be part of this committee, and it's just great to be a citizen in Spanish Fork. We love all of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. This might be the first time that Richard and Annalee actually just get to go sit at something and enjoy and don't have to coordinate and plan and, you know, look over all the details. So we hope that you enjoy all of the festivities, and we appreciate all your service throughout the years. Okay, Seth, or Nick, let's have you, you next. Okay, everyone.
So we have a large contingency that we're bringing up as part of the Fiesta Days Rodeo Committee. I am a member of that committee, Seth, and I am the only member of the committee that has good-looking hair, so I wanted to show it off. I didn't put my hat on, I felt like you probably wanted to see my hair. You don't?
He forgot it?
Correct him.
Go ahead, Doug. Doug. No, Doug, no. No point order, Doug.
Talking to the mic.
He's the one that started it. So just so everybody understands, so everyone on the rodeo committee received an email as to what we were supposed to wear to this meeting. Everyone followed it, obviously, except Seth. So I'm wondering, maybe you may want to entertain a motion to have him buy donuts for the next meeting because he couldn't follow instructions.
So anyways, we're here, we're here to talk about the Fiesta Day, I don't know who invited Doug. Seriously.
All in favor?
Aye. Of not inviting Doug? No. So we have an amazing Fiesta Days Rodeo Committee, and we have Nick Hanks, and we have Kevin Parker, and we have Jason Christensen. I don't know who this guy is. Doug Ford. We love Doug. And back in the crowd somewhere, I think it's Shar, there she is. Kevin's amazing wife, Shar, she's fantastic, and she's somebody we've really enjoyed having around the different things that we do, and frankly, is a tremendous asset to the riding club, to the rodeo, and to the community. So we appreciate that Shar's here supporting the rodeo and her husband. Back in the back, he's not on the rodeo committee, but Chris Ivy, I think he's taken pictures or he has been. Chris is a part of the riding club, and he'll be taking some pictures of what we're doing because he's got some personal connections, but I just wanted to say thanks to Chris and the Diamond Fork Riding Club for what they do. It's an amazing event, and the riding club, the Diamond Fork Riding Club, whose colors we wear right now play an integral part in making that happen. I want to touch on just a couple of things I've been asked to touch on, and then we'll have Nick talk about a few specific details, and Jason about the rodeo royalty. The Fiesta Days Rodeo is five nights this year. We have been selling out the Fiesta Days Rodeo since 2007. Four nights since 2007 have sold out every performance. In 2012, the arena grew by 3,000 seats for four nights. In 2012, we sold out every performance, and again, since then, for several years. We have been selling this out. So last year, we added a fifth night. We can't make a bigger arena again, so we added 8,500 more seats by adding a fifth night. At this moment in time, July 9, there are less than 8,500 seats left to all five of the performances. What that means is that if we didn't add that fifth night, as of right now, the four nights of Fiesta Days Rodeo would be sold out by July 9. That's quite amazing. The community loves the rodeo, it's a tremendous part of who we are and the culture of the community, but we're really happy and excited that we have this fifth night, because that means that 8,500 more fans get to see the rodeo, or something like that. My guess is that a lot of people will go to multiple nights, and especially because that fifth night this year is an Extreme Bulls event. So Tyler's pulled up on the screen, you can see it's not just one whole night is left open. The tickets are scattered throughout the various five nights. So if you want to get a ticket to a specific night, get out there right now, because if you want to go to the event Friday night, you're probably looking at some single seats here and there, certainly not large groups of seats. To that Extreme Bull Saturday night, it's getting to be slim pickings. And right now, the best left night is Wednesday night, but my guess is by the week of the, let's see, by, yeah, six, seven days from now, you'll be down to less than 1,000 seats even there as well. So if you haven't, get your tickets quick, because they're going fast. This year, our pre-show activities will start at 7:30 every night. We have mutton busting that happens every night this year. Little buckaroos will get on some sheep, they'll try to ride them as long as they can for a score. That'll happen at 7:30 every night. And we are going to work the pre-show activities, and First Buck will happen at 8:00 PM. Through the years, the First Buck maybe was around 8:10, 8:12, even 8:15. First Buck will be at eight o'clock, and that will help us to move things along and end a little bit earlier. With the goal, next year, the Fiesta Days Rodeo Committee has decided to start the rodeo a half hour earlier, a full half hour earlier. So pre-show activities will start at 7:00 PM, and First Buck will happen at 7:30 PM. That's a big change. That means that people, it's a family-friendly start time, and we're really excited about that. People that get tickets, they won't be leaving the arena at 10:30 or 10:45 at night. They'll be leaving around 10:00 o'clock, they'll get home at a really good hour. If they have to go to work in the morning, that will help them to do that. If they have to drive to Salt Lake or to Vernal, we have a lot of our patrons that come from faraway places, they'll get home a half hour or so earlier because of that family-friendly start time. So we wanted to announce that tonight. And that's all I have to say, so we'll let Nick and Jason talk about the things that they would like to talk about, and Kevin and Doug can talk about anything that they want. Well, Doug's done. Kevin's done.
Well, thank you for having us. I want to echo some of Seth's comments and thank the Diamond Fork Riding Club. They originally started this rodeo 77 years ago, I believe. So we couldn't do without them. They're invaluable. I'd like to take a minute and thank my sponsors. We have some of the most loyal, awesome sponsors I could ever imagine having. They support us. We couldn't do this without them. I wish I had time to name them all, but there are some wonderful businesses in this community that support the rodeo. And then I want to thank the mayor and the council. We couldn't do it without you guys and the support that you give us. It's fun to see, we go to some national conventions and things like that, and other rodeos, it seems like they always butt heads with the city that they're in. When I tell them we have the mayor, the city manager, the Parks and Recreation Director that sit on our committee, they're blown away. And that all starts at the top with you guys, so thank you. We really appreciate that. We do have tonight with us our rodeo royalty for Fiesta Days, our queen, Lindsay Ivy, and she comes bearing gifts.
That just also goes right here. Thanks, Lindsay.
See, we'll take those down in the end.
No, Seth, that didn't pay your debt.
Okay. Kylie Taylor is our first attendant, and Madison Wallace is our second attendant. So we'd like to thank them for being here. And I'm going to let Jason come up in a minute and introduce you to the other pretty lady here, but Seth just whispered in my ear, he forgot to tell you, we have what I think is our very favorite specialty act this year. I believe we had them in 2016 was the last time we had them. Cowboy Kenny, the Steel Motorcycle Tour. He's the guy, if you'll remember, that we did at the end of the rodeo. We'd set up the giant ramp, and he'd do six or eight backflips while he was in the air. That might be an exaggeration, but.
Especially I got us.
Yeah. Really impressive. It's pretty fun, so you won't want to miss that. We have J.J. Harrison as our clown this year, who again is one of the favorites. He's the YouTube fame of Officer.
Adams.
Adams, getting him out there, dancing with him, so it's a lot of fun. Get your tickets, they're going fast, and thanks for having us. Jason?
Back to the Cowboy Kenny thing, I think we decided not wrong to do it during the parade. I don't think we're going to do it after the rodeo. We'll do it during, so it seemed like the year we did it, people were trying to leave and then stop and watch it, and anyways, we're going to try, so bear with us the first couple nights till we get. So I'm the president of the Diamond Fork Riding Club. This is my second year being president, and I don't, you guys all might know, we do a buckaroo rodeo. We've done it for 20-some years. And when you go to the PRCA conventions, they talk about youth, 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 youth. And we had a chance to go not too long ago, and I've had several people ask us how we did it. We just do it, you know? Takes a lot of our club.
So they don't do a buckaroo rodeo, they do five buckaroos. A whole series.
Yeah, we do a whole series, and then at the end, we give first, second, third buckles plus money. So we got thinking as a club, it's really took off good. We had Casey Fields come through, Caleb Bennett, Jesse Davis, Steve Woolsey, all them top cowboys have come through our program, and the city allows us to use that arena on one night, one Saturday a month, and so thanks to these guys for allowing us to do that, and it's a big deal for the youth. So anyway, so what we decided to do, this is Morgan Ivy. This is the first year we've ever done a buckaroo rodeo queen. So we've asked, we put a contest together, just like these guys went through. We've asked her to mentor, these girls will mentor her through the year, and our hopes are that we can get a lot more girls participating in this. And we already do a queen seminar and all that earlier in the year, but, so this is Morgan Ivy. I asked her twice what her name was, I forgot twice. We're glad to have her, and so you'll see her with these guys, and she'll be riding the parade with them. She won't be in the arena or nothing like that, but she'll ride in the parade and do all that other stuff, so we're proud to do that, and thank you guys very much.
Awesome. Girls, girls get to say something?
Speaking?
I'll just introduce myself. I'm Lindsay Ivy. I am from Benjamin, just right down the road. I am 16 years old, and I'll be a junior at Spanish Fork High School this year. And we have had lots of fun so far this year as the Spanish Fork Rodeo Royalty, and I am very excited for this upcoming few weeks.
Awesome.
So I'm Kylie Taylor, and I'm the first attendant this year. I am from Levan, Utah, so not too far, but down the road a little ways. Some of you guys might know my dad, Brady Taylor. He works here in Spanish Fork, so we do a lot up here, and we love it. I'm so excited for next week. Like Lindsay said, it's going to be lots of fun. We've already had lots of fun, all of the parades we've went to, and so I'm so excited to get Fiesta started.
So my name is Madison Wallace. I am from Glenwood, Utah. I am 21 years old, and I'm currently attending Southern Utah University. Go T-Birds. I have received my minor in chemistry, and I'm going into my last year majoring in agribusiness with plans to graduate in the spring of 2020. So I've been to Fiesta Days a couple times representing other royalties, and I am absolutely pleased to be here as a second attendant to represent. So Fiesta Days is one of the biggest celebrations in Utah, and I'm very excited to be a part of it down on the arena floor this year, so it's nice to meet all of you.
Awesome.
So my name is Morgan Ivy. I am this year's Diamond Forks Riding Club's Winter Series Queen. I'm 13 years old, and I am very excited to go and represent Diamond Fork and all that they do for this community.
Thank you.
Girls, and thanks for the treats. I really will share.
I can tell you guys that sitting there watching nights of rodeo with a seven-year-old girl, she doesn't stop for the whole year after seeing those girls whip around with the flags and everything. You guys are an awesome part of the rodeo, especially for little girls that just cheer loud when you come around, so thanks for all you do.
We did a number of assemblies to different elementary schools, and they think the cowboys are pretty cool, but they flock to the royalty, which is, just as you described. Thank you so much for this time that we've had to talk about the rodeo and for the support from the city and the City Council especially. We look forward to seeing you each night of the rodeo and letting you tour around the arena and saying hello to all the great people. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Stacy, for all the work you put in with Fiesta Days. I know, long nights. Anytime that you walk into the Parks and Rec Building, those guys are locked in a downstairs room trying to figure out all the details. So you guys put in a lot of work, and of course, the riding club and the rodeo too. So it'll be a fun time, make sure that everybody comes and participates. Even people from Salem can come over to Spanish Fork and be in Fiesta Days.
Brandon might lock you out. Chief Adams isn't here tonight, so.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to number seven, consent items on the agenda.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Gordon, second by Councilmember Beck to approve the consent items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to public hearing, item number eight and letter number A. Ordinance number Z0519, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Del Monte Zone Change. Dave Anderson.
Counsel, thank you. I'm going to reference this map here for just a quick minute and then talk a little bit about the item that you just introduced. I think in a lot of ways, Spanish Fork has outgrown some of the zoning that we have in place in a few different parts of the community. The area around the intersection of Del Monte Road and Arrowhead Trail, I think, is one of those areas where in the past, there have been some industrial uses, we saw some properties that are being used industrially in that part of the community. And just to touch on a few things that we as staff have talked about, potentially requesting you to change, I'll start with I-2 zone. We have a handful of properties in the area that are currently zoned I-2. That's a medium industrial zone, we might say, which allows for a lot of uses that we today don't necessarily feel are compatible with some of the newer developments that have happened in this part of the community. Residential developments really being the biggest change that's occurred, although there's a school also there as well. I'll talk more about that in just a minute, but also there's some areas zoned in a light industrial zone, I-1, and we have a property, the ALA site, which is kind of a combination of a few different zoning districts. So with that being said, it was a few months ago that we first started looking at this area and started thinking about some changes that we felt made sense, and we had some conversations with the City Council relative to some changes that we thought were worth considering, and the city proposed, in fact, to change the zoning on this site right here, as well as one that we'll talk about in a moment, the next item on the agenda, but just to focus right now on the corner of Del Monte Road and Arrowhead Trail. It's currently zoned Industrial 2. You recall that there was a project approved just a little over a year ago, I think 14 or 15 months ago, for a storage unit development there, and I'm really going to try to just cut to the chase right now, and you can ask me questions about anything that you might want to discuss relative to the proposal, but of course, these proposals, they've been reviewed by the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission, and relative to this first proposal, which is to change the Industrial 2 zone here on this property from I-2 to rural residential. The Planning Commission made a recommendation, which I think syncs up very well with the thoughts of the Development Review Committee, which is that there's some value in having the city as the applicant withdraw that proposal and do that right now. I think you can do that in this meeting. Think you can do that in this meeting, uh, that is withdraw the proposed zone change for industrial two. I'd recommend that that happen with instructions for staff to re-initiate the zone change, or you could pick a date, you know, sometime in the next week or two, um, which would do a key thing for the current property owners of that site. They would then legally have an opportunity to submit an, legally then have an opportunity to submit an application to have the previously approved project re-approved, and provided that they submit a complete application, it doesn't need to be a perfect application, but a complete one, before a proposed zone change then gets put back in the pipeline. They would have a vested right to have that application considered by the city and given the fact that storage units are a conditional use in the I two zone. Basically, it's not a matter of whether the project would be approved or not, but how. Um, the project could be re-approved, they could build the project, and they could operate it as storage units into perpetuity, um, even if the zoning then is changed from industrial two to something else. It would be a non-conforming use. We've discussed that with the property owners. Um, I'll let them speak for themselves, but I believe they're comfortable having the storage units exist there as a non-conforming use. Um, personally, if that's their intent is to operate it as storage units for some time into the future, there's really not a downside for them, uh, to have the property exist that way. What I do think is very important, however, is that that industrial two zone goes away. Um, I think that has some potential, enough potential to be very problematic for the neighborhood, that we need to do what's been done, which is to be somewhat more proactive than the city had been in the past, to maybe fix some of these obsolete historical zoning remnants that we have in this part of the community, and that's the recommendation that I bring tonight, you know, from, I think, both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission, which is, in essence, to put that proposed zone change on hold with a plan to get it going again fairly soon, um, with the very explicit understanding that that would give the applicants, property owners with the storage unit project an opportunity to reapply and to move forward with that.
Perfect.
Does that make sense? Any questions about that?
Questions for Dave before we go into public hearing?
Only maybe what would, what would be prudent in time? I know when we talked earlier today, you would maybe, thought maybe that a couple of weeks, or if, maybe the first of, uh, August, our first council meeting in August? Or I guess really, there's no date that.
I, I would love to have a date, just that's, I just clear direction from the council on that.
And maybe, maybe the applicants can speak to that if they wanna let us know how long it might take them to.
Seventy, sixty days?
Thirty, sixty days, okay, as long as that was fair.
Three days, six days?
Three, not, not three, six.
Hours?
Just thirty days and a half.
Let's invite the applicant up before we go into.
I'm not scared, Colonel Engineer, could it be your deny a good hook?
Can you come up to the mic so we can get you on? Sorry.
We have, we have about thirteen thousand viewers.
Yeah, introduce yourself, sorry.
The guy already told me he's gonna shave some weight off me.
Oh, good, good.
Uh, so what, thirty, sixty days would be fine with us. We just wanna make sure we, we give our engineer ample time to move, the economy's clipping along, building environment is, you know, really fast, and so we wanna do it as soon as we can, though. We'd do it in two days if it's ready.
Okay.
Soon as it's ready, we're gonna, just gonna bring it in.
Thank you. Okay, if we have any more questions, we'll ask you during, um, this is a, a public hearing item, so I would entertain a motion to go to public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gordon, second by Councilman Argyle to go into public hearing for this zone change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in public hearing, if there's anybody here to speak to this agenda item. Okay, motion to go out of public hearing?
So, second.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Councilmember Beck, motion second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, anything else from, questions to, uh, staff or anybody?
Just wanted to clarify, so it doesn't sound like they have to have, uh, detailed plans, but if they make application, and that can be done online, is that accurate?
Yeah, we'd expect it to be done online, they're welcome to come into the office as well, and relative to the timing, someone maybe, maybe push a little bit on, on that aspect. Um, I believe the plans that were approved again just over a year ago, probably in and of themselves would qualify as, as making for a complete application. It doesn't have to be perfect for it to be, again, a vested application that they can move forward with, and frankly, I don't think that there's a lot at risk by having maybe that zoning window open for thirty or sixty days, but I'm a little uncomfortable, you know, having it float out several weeks, so that's, that's my thought.
So is there a reason why after fifteen months, now they wanna do this project, correct?
I'll let them speak to that, any of those questions.
Here, why?
We've been, it's a good question. We've been working on this project for the whole time. We've had our engineers and our builder involved. There's quite a complicated sewer system that we're being required to do by the city, it's very costly, and it goes all the way to the Spanish Fork River, and so there's been some engineering involved in that. As you know, the soils are poor on this property, which really kinda makes it, is the crux of our issue, and so we've had to go through quite a bit of soil engineering, city engineering to approve that, peer review engineering, that kinda stuff. It is, it's well intense, ready right now to go, and then at the last minute, we changed our bank, so our bank is happy and ready to go now too, and so, you know, it's, it's just taken us some time. I think once again, the, the building climate and how busy our engineer has been, how busy the city has been, how busy the, the builder has been, has played into that, there's quite a bit of stuff going on in the county right now, and so, but no, we're ready to go, we're happy and wanna move forward, so.
So your plans didn't change, you've still been working on this project?
Yeah, yeah, in fact, we believe that the, really the only thing that can be built on this corner is, is storage cost effectively because of the, the poor quality of the soils, and we've been through that with the Planning Commission, and I think that there's some consensus on that, it's kind of a tougher bill to go, so we, but we've taken our time and, and designed a, at the request of a couple of our partners that are locals, we've just tried to design a, a, a site that's aesthetically pleasing, it's pleased the neighbors and creates, you know, a good neighbor for everyone there, so.
Could we get your name for the minutes?
My name is Brad Kitchen.
All right.
And I represent the developer right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I know when I met with, uh, some of the parties involved, that, uh, they thought that their time began in February after they got some approval on some soil samples, and so that helped me, as we, we extend, you know, we extend projects all the time, and we just, it, it lapsed, right, and we, we missed it, and so I appreciated the time that I was able to spend with the applicant and getting a better understanding for that, and I appreciated the time that the Planning Commission spent on this, as I watched, uh, them deliberate a, you know, not an easy one, but, uh, so really appreciated them and their recommendation to basically do what you said, Dave, so.
Anything else? I'd echo what Brandon said, thanks to the, uh, the Planning Commission, thanks to the applicant for working through an issue and, uh, and all the deliberation that goes on there to, to try to get something right here in the city. Uh, Dave's recommendation followed what the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, recommended, which was to withdraw the, the city's proposal of the zone change, uh, and he'd like a definite, uh, some level of a timeframe, so we're discussing this again to, to possibly put it back to a, a different zone to have you be legal non-conforming.
I know I'm speaking a lot, but I would say that if we could get a timeframe so that then maybe we could be talking about this further, like at the first of August, so if that, I know when we spoke today, you were talking about something, uh, towards the end of July, which I know is only.
When's our, when's our meeting in August? Do we meet the sixth?
Yep.
And, uh, you know, it, this is gonna seem, seem repetitive, but if this application were withdrawn, then the next step would be another hearing with the Planning Commission. Their next meeting's on August seventh, and we'll send notices for that right around the twenty-third, so probably just the day before the twenty-fourth of July, so that's one thing, maybe consider that's two weeks that they'd have to reapply, um, then we could send the notices for the, for the zone change, um, on the twenty-third and.
What about the plans you, you currently have?
So that's all we would need, and then we can.
Just, can, are, are any of yours gonna have time to find a text behind our, if we don't get time? Why don't we just do thirty days and then, or does that make you uncomfortable, Dave?
I wouldn't probably wanna go any farther than that, but.
That gets, that gets to your, that gets us to the second.
He wants to be able to set up, though.
So then that would be.
Before Planning Commission of August.
And that would set us up for September, so anything beyond, at this point, probably two weeks, we'd be looking at September.
But to be clear, all they really need to do is come down to the, to your office and make application.
Yeah.
It, it's not, it's not as much as, um, as so much as getting these plans detailed, we'll work that out, but as long as we have, and you can even do that online, right?
Most folks do that, yeah.
Folks do it online or, or that, if we did that.
That's four, it's four weeks, so it's twenty-eight days.
Yeah, okay, you're kinda like that.
I don't see, honestly, there being a big difference between two weeks and, and four for us necessarily.
Okay. Is anybody prepared to make a motion on that front? I'll make a motion.
I'm happy to.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
I'm gonna try to get it right. Uh, I make, uh, I move, we withdraw the, uh, proposal for the zone change, um, uh, per the recommendation of DRC and, and Planning Commission of Ordinance Z zero five dash nineteen, changing the zone designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Del Monte Zone Change.
Second.
With the caveat of, uh, the two-week timeframe for those, that reapplication, uh, to be made, so we can, uh, get this, uh, get this moving in the next council meetings.
Can I second that now?
You can second that now, yeah, yeah, if you'd like.
Second.
Okay. Motion, uh, uh, by Councilman Mendenhall, seconded by Councilmember Beck, uh, this is, is this a roll call vote, Junior?
No.
Doesn't have to be on a withdrawal, okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you, guys, for coming. Um, item B, uh, Ordinance Z zero six nineteen, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the ALA Zone Change.
This one's really easy, I believe, um, for a lot of different reasons, probably the biggest one is that zoning for a school largely doesn't matter. Um, however, to have the opportunity to, uh, eliminate, again, I two zoning, which is part of the current American Leadership Academy site, and have the zoning just made consistent throughout the site, having the property zoned public facilities, which we as staff, I believe, all feel is the best zone for a public use like a, a school, um, this is an easy one, in our opinion, to recommend that, that we approve that change from these three different zoning districts to public facilities, and it really doesn't have any bearing on what, uh, can happen at the school and how the school can operate. We don't envision that use changing anytime soon, but it's kind of a cleanup that we do just to try to maintain consistency, and I'll just mention this before we talk anymore about, uh, this map, maybe we won't talk again about it, but we do anticipate bringing forward other changes for you to consider relative to the other industrial zones that exist on properties in this area that I kinda referenced at the beginning, might be August, might be September, might be October, but we'd really like to see some things adjusted here, again, just to make sure that our zoning's contemporary and consistent with kinda what's happening in the area and the general plan versus what I really think is obsolete.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave before we open it up to public hearing? Okay, anybody make a.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gordon, second by Councilman Argyle to go into public hearing for Ordinance Z zero six dash nineteen, uh, with the ALA Zone Change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in public hearing. Is anybody here to speak to this ordinance proposal? Okay.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gordon, second by Councilman Argyle to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any questions for Dave on this one?
I move we approve Ordinance Z zero six dash nineteen, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the ALA Zone Change. Second.
Motion by Councilman Scopes, second by Councilman Argyle, uh, for the ALA Zone Change. Uh, roll call vote for this, Junior? Okay, roll call?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Uh, Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall, aye. Councilman Scopes?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
That passes. Moves us on to item C of the public hearing, Ordinance fourteen nineteen, amending the C two general commercial zone to allow event centers.
Yeah, I think this proposal is fairly simple, uh, as well, um, it really do three things. First of all, it would define an event center, I think we might know that better as a reception center, um, but you'll see that, uh, there is a definition in the proposed ordinance for an event center, and really, again, that's intended to, to cover things like an event center. Um, it then makes it clear that event centers are permitted uses in the commercial two zone, and then lastly, adjusts, uh, our parking requirement table to also clearly define how much parking's required for an event center. I think from a land use perspective, it's really, really easy to, uh, to support the idea that this particular use that we're defining would work well throughout the community on properties that are zoned commercial two. Uh, this is brought forth by an applicant, Ashley Shepherd, who has a particular property in mind, uh, that's currently zoned commercial two, um, and we think, uh, it's important to make these changes now, really as much as anything for her benefit, so that she can move forward with a very clear understanding of what's allowed, what she can count on having approved if she continues to invest in her idea, concept and project as it moves forward, and we certainly hope that it moves forward, we as staff, I think all believe it's a great idea.
Great.
It's on South Main.
Yeah.
Where Arrowhead Trail meets.
Yeah, yeah, property that we recently annexed within the last year or two, just, just, uh, I'm trying to recall now if it's immediately adjacent to the river. It's really close to it, yeah, the Barrett property there, right, so.
Perfect. Any questions for Dave before public hearing? Ashley, do you wanna, the applicant wanna speak before public hearing, or are you good?
Do you wanna?
Yeah.
Do you wanna hear the kind of the preliminary of it?
Sure, come on up, no, you, we, we can hear it.
Okay, so I'm Ashley Shepherd. Um, I, first of all, I've never been to city council.
What?
No pressure.
No, I actually love it. I feel like I like.
Yeah.
Fit in here. I'll never be there, I don't live in Spanish Fork, but, um, no, I loved it, I loved just the tight-knit community that was very apparent tonight, um, especially with Fiesta Days, that's maybe, maybe it's here every month, but I feel like it was really apparent tonight, which really ties into our project. Um, I feel like Spanish Fork doesn't necessarily have a, an event center, reception center that accommodates, uh, multiple events. I know one was just recently opened, um, on the north end of Main Street, and that's great, and I think it's a great facility for people to have weddings there. Uh, ours will be a little bit different in regards to, we'll have an indoor facility and outdoor garden area, so you can be married indoor, outdoor, but we also want to involve the community besides just wedding receptions. So the ideas kind of we have are to include the community in different events throughout the year. So we wanna do a breakfast with Santa, where families can pay to come have a, a breakfast and meet Santa Claus, take pictures, same with, we wanna do maybe like a Mother's Day, um, mother and daughter kinda tea party the Saturday before Mother's Day, uh, just different events throughout the year, have a prime rib and seafood buffet one night, or just a lot of different events, um, that will bring the community together and continue to strengthen those relationships here in Spanish Fork. So if you wanna look, this is the back of the actual event center, so this will open up into the garden area, um, does it have a picture of the front?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. So that's what the front of it will look like facing Main Street, and then the total building, um, is right around seventy-four hundred square feet, so the main floor will be, um, mostly like your reception area, your bathrooms, your office, and a large commercial kitchen, um, to facilitate my catering company. And then the upstairs, we have designed a conference room that seats thirty-six to forty people, and then we have a small business room that would just hold a conference table for twelve to fourteen, and then a brides room and some bathrooms up there. So that's kind of the preliminary idea of our project, and it is, like you said, it's on the south side of Main Street. it is, like he said, it's on the south side of Main Street. The property actually butts up right to River Bridge, right? Our kind of corner piece butts up right there. Oh, right here, there you go. So that's the actual property. I think we're the very last property that's in Spanish Fork City's zone, correct?
Yeah.
I believe the property to the south of us is county.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's kind of our preliminary.
Thanks, Ashley. Thanks. Thanks for being here. Okay, public, do we have a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Scopes. Go into public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone here to speak to this proposed zone change? Seeing none, I make a motion we go out of public hearing?
Second.
Motion, and seconded by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing. Any questions for Ashley or the staff from up here?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance number fourteen dash nineteen, an ordinance amending the C two general commercial zone to allow event centers.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. This is a roll-call vote. Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Scopes?
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall, aye. Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
That passes.
Did you see how she looked at the councilman with five daughters?
With money signs in her eyes is what it was.
Historically, the father of the bridegays for the wedding.
Just want him to get on a payment plan with you now, or when do you want that? Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley.
That moves us to number nine, new business on our agenda. And item A, preliminary plat for the Legacy Townhomes Master Plan Development. Dave Anderson.
Once again, thank you. I don't know if you can find some kind of map overall. Yeah, that's probably fine, right there. So the subject property here, it's north of four hundred north, adjacent to Spanish Fork Parkway, on the east side of Spanish Fork Parkway. So from this image here, you can see this little red area here. This is property that is zoned commercially right now. It was zoned that way with the Legacy Farms annexation ten-plus years ago. And we're talking about the site that's just north of that. And in fact, part of the proposal tonight involves scaling back the area that would be developed as part of this project residentially in order to provide more depth for the commercial parcel. That's just space from four hundred north to the southern boundary of this project, so that when this property develops, it potentially could accommodate something like a grocery store. Probably something like ninety or a hundred, a hundred and ten feet shallow right now of really being able to fit some of the things that folks have talked about fitting on that site that I think would be a real asset for that part of the community someday. So we appreciate the applicant taking that step and kind of scaling some things back, again, relative to the area that's being dedicated to the residential development. Again, I'm going to try to be brief. In my view, I think the real questions relative to this project and what happens, and to a larger extent, how it happens, were defined with the Legacy Farms Development Agreement, which in essence, particularly the latest version that was just approved last year, says that this property can be developed with up to a hundred and seventy dwelling units. Hundred and seventy dwelling units is what's proposed tonight. We had anticipated that this would probably be the type of housing that would be included with the project here. The property's been zoned R three, so Townhomes, again, not a surprise at all. Maybe just to touch on a couple of things that we have discussed quite a bit as staff with the applicant about. Because the residential area's been pared back a little bit, we've been pretty particular, staff, to push the applicant to embellish amenities and the overall design, to try to maybe, that's how I'd put it at least, even though there's maybe less quantity of space to work with, to up their game in terms of the quality of amenities that are provided. And I'll let Mr. DeMarco with Salisbury Homes talk a little bit about some of the specifics that they're doing there. But really to cut to the end of things with maybe just a few tweaks that we've talked with the applicant about that we think still might need to be made relative to some street design things, minor street design things, some parking being rearranged maybe a little bit, things of that nature. Staff, at this point, is really comfortable recommending that the project be approved. Both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have made that recommendation. And I think it might be helpful for me just to leave it at that. We actually have a presentation that Salisbury's provided that, if you're okay with it, I'll just turn things over to them and let them present.
Great. You're up?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having us. As Dave mentioned, I'm Mike DeMarco with Salisbury Homes. Happy to be back. As Dave mentioned, we've been working on this for quite some time. We've owned one of the parcels here for just coming up on eighteen months, and the second one for about a year, ten months. And we've been in and out, working with staff very closely to make sure the project aligns, first and foremost, with the Legacy Farms design guidelines. We've worked a lot in there. And secondly, to make sure we bring another great community to our, you know, future residents and home buyers. We feel like we've learned a lot in the past little while with the couple of projects that we've done, mostly here in town, that were more of these higher-density-type townhome projects. So we're pretty excited. We've been to Planning Commission a couple of times with their recommendation. And as Dave mentioned, we went back and really sharpened our pencil and made sure that amenities were being properly placed for the residents to have a community that was really livable. You know, the product, we feel, is fitting and beautiful for the area. And hopefully we've got everything in line so that we have a project where people are really happy to live. As Dave mentioned, the southern property boundary has been moved ninety or a hundred-odd feet to accommodate the commercial to the south. We're still very comfortable with the way the density is laid out and the way the project functions, the way the traffic will move through it. And most importantly, we're excited about the linear park space that we're able to give to the residents rather than having these broken-up cluster parks. I think that's the biggest thing that we were initially going for here, is we have the cluster parks on another project here in town, and they just always feel like they're crammed in somewhere. So this linear look, more like what we did previously at Maple Mountain Townhomes, we feel is just a much more usable area for the residents. So as Dave mentioned, we have that fly-through if that's possible. And I think this is the best way. We have an employee within our office that is pretty sharp at being able to put these in a format that we can view rather than looking at it two-dimensionally on paper. Thank you for turning off that horrible music. So this is the entrance that comes in off Slant Road. And essentially, you're looking down through that linear park there. There's, they noted basketball courts should be mirrored. But essentially, there's open space for all of the residents to be able to enjoy. There's double-sided or four-sided architectural on any of the architectural amenities on any of the units facing public streets. We've provided plenty of parking and full-depth garages for all of the residents. As it moves down to the side here on the left, it'd be where the railroad tracks are. So we've got these units and additional landscaping amenities that'll kind of block them from those tracks. There's these traffic calming features that we've installed. That's one of the, that was the change that Dave was maybe alluding to in the streets. We submitted an update to our application earlier or late last week that we moved those around with staff's recommendation. But areas where residents can cross safely and get into that center courtyard area, this will start going down into some of the specific amenities that we have placed. The whole project is fenced with masonry walls on all of the exteriors. In all of the backyards, we have these courtyard patios that we'll build with the units, so they'll be installed and ready for the residents. They have their own private space that they can put their barbecue and et cetera. The southeast corner was an area that was kind of not being utilized very well, so we put in a dog park, a fenced dog park, where people can go and let their animals off leash and have some space that's for them specifically rather than using that center park for everyone's dogs to tear up. These are those courtyards that are in the backyard. We're excited about these. In other projects, residents want fencing, and none of the fences ever match. So if we can do it in the onset, I think it controls it a lot better. And everybody loves to have that little private area, which makes a lot of sense. In the center of that park, we have three separate playground facilities for the residents. All of the units that are backing the park have those small courtyards where the residents can have a little bit of delineation from the park itself and maybe a little bit of privacy with the landscaping that they'll have in there and whatnot. And I think this is a really good view. This architecture is what faces the parkway. So all of the units that face the parkway not only have, it looks like the front of the house facing the parkway, but from inside of the project, it also looks like the front of the house. So you've kind of got double-sided architecture on any of the units that are in an area where you'll see both sides of them. So there's a rear-load concept in here and then a front-load as well, more of a traditional front-load. So I think that video just helps us really get an idea of kind of the fit of everything that's in there, the amenities that are offered to the residents. And we're hoping that we've put something together that, as Dave alluded to, best utilizes the space for everybody that is going to be living there soon. That was a lot in a very short amount of time.
No, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Any questions, please? Somebody?
Salisbury gonna build them?
Yes, sir. We're just finishing up in Parkview down here. Thank, well, maybe not thank goodness, but our last building is up. So we're just finishing up. We've got twenty-odd units left in there, and we're out.
Four phases, how many units?
There's a hundred and seventy units total. Each phase has roughly forty to forty-five units, and there's a smaller one on the tail end. Your ordinance for amount of units on a singular access is generous, really. So we can put temporary turnarounds in and phase this quickly. We plan to build all the Phase One and Two first. And the nice thing about that is it finishes off, the parkway's already finished, but the north side on Slant is not. So this Phase One makes a lot of sense down here. We'll kind of be out on our island, and it'll be really apparent. And then we can finish Phase Two, and the whole frontage is improved, and we can work in the background, and we won't be a nuisance. So it seemed to make sense. But we'll go quickly. We have our first-phase final plat ready to submit, and we'd like to have the first phase built before winter, because we're out of work down here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. My two cents on something like this, I think we've all talked about it at one time or another. But Spanish Fork, and community development, and all aspects of the city try to be forward-thinking somewhat. And I think this is very forward-thinking to preserve some of that commercial space, to make something actual possible in a commercial space. Because as we've all heard at some point or another, there's some anxiety of our current residents that ask about growth. And when they hear a hundred and seventy new people coming into their community, they're like, well, this is my community, you know? And they get a little protective of that, which is okay. But this is what smart planning is, I think, with Dave and his department and working hand-in-glove with the developers, is making a walkable community to this. These are, if and when the grocery store does go up here, these are people that shop and walk right to the grocery store rather than maybe a hundred and seventy trips right downtown that is what makes a lot of residents anxious. So good work in looking forward, I think. Any other questions, comments, or have I editorialized enough? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion for this preliminary plat? We didn't have a public hearing.
Oh, this and don't.
I think we can just...
Motion to approve preliminary plat for Legacy Townhomes Master Plan Development.
Second. Councilman, motion by Councilman Argyle to approve the preliminary plat for Legacy Townhomes Master Plan Development, and I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Takes us to item B, Ordinance fifteen nineteen, establishing small wireless facility regulations.
Thank you. So we're proposing that we add a new Chapter forty-four to Title Five. Title Five is our business regulation title. The small cell ordinances are like cell towers, only smaller in height. These are necessary to accommodate the 5G that you hear about for the cellphone technology. The way that technology works is these are faster, are more powerful, but they don't have very much range. And so there'll be a lot of them, but they won't be very high. And we felt we ought to get ahead of the curve a little bit and get some regulations in place. There already is some federal rules. There's also state law that we have to follow. And so we have put this ordinance together, following both the federal and the state rules, and then taking the area where we've got some discretion and doing some things to accommodate our citizens' needs. So as we see this technology coming, we see something that residents will be very excited about, they'll be very interested in having. And yet, because there are going to be so many of them, we also see a real need to protect the aesthetics and the beauty of our community. And that's what this ordinance starts to do. So I am planning on going through this a little more detail than what I usually do, because it's pretty new. So if you want me to speed up or anything, give me a prod, or if you want me to slow down, ask some questions, let's do that. So first of all, as we get into this, we make it clear that you have to have a franchise agreement in order to participate in this program. Franchise agreement will be good for seven years. And these will be non-exclusive, so we could have a dozen of them. You know, there's probably four or five major cellphone companies now. They each will have one. And, you know, there are offshoots, there are smaller companies. It's hard to predict that. And so because of that, we also encourage co-location and urge them to share the same facilities. The application fees, these basically follow the state law. So a hundred-dollar application fee, we will charge, that's for co-location, a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar application fee for just a single location. Or what we're seeing in some parts of the country is they'll submit an application for one company, but they might have a dozen. They might have several locations in their application. And so we'll look at that as an application. Now, there's also a site license fee. By our state law, that's three-point-five percent of all gross revenue, or two-hundred-and-fifty dollars annually per facility, whichever is greater. And so we have some opportunity there also to generate a small amount of revenue. Now, honestly, that, unless we're just overrun with these, that's probably going to barely cover our expenses to process these. Now, they also have to have a site plan. They have to, you know, show what they're going to do, what they're going to do. They need to show how it all fits together. One of the concerns we've had, and we'll talk about this in our next agenda item, is the state law allows a pole to have facilities on it of twenty-eight cubic feet. Now, think about that. That's the size of a small refrigerator. You don't want necessarily a refrigerator hanging on every pole. Now, some of the stuff, you know, is ground-related items. You have to have power to all these to make them function. And they also, they also need to have fiber. And we're going to talk about that here in a little bit as well. So we require them to meet our design guidelines. And the design guidelines are detailed, and they're the next item on the agenda. I mention that here only because our ordinance references them and says, as you go out and you build your product, you need to meet our standard. One of the things that make these work fast is their reliance on the internet and fiber optics. And so if they're trying to use a Wi-Fi type of technology, they're going to destroy the speeds of all the neighbors around that facility. That's a concern to us. And so we build into our ordinance, which is not in the state law nor in the federal rules at this point, that they have to use a fiber backhaul in order to get their signal to a point where they can disseminate it, you know, throughout the world, wherever it needs to go. That protects our residents who are using Wi-Fi in their homes on their various devices, that their speeds aren't just totally destroyed. Because we have our own cable system, we've also built in that they will use our SFC and fiber if it's available. And if not, then they have to use someone else's fiber. But they have to use fiber. They can't use a wireless technology to try and make that work. So that, in a nutshell, is what this seeks to accomplish, is to bring forth a new technology that is exciting in its potential. But the downside is it can be really ugly. And so we're trying to protect the aesthetics while also providing a great service. So questions about that? I should mention, we worked with some of the industry folks on this. This is, it's taken us probably eight or nine months to get to this point. We put a lot of effort into this.
Questions for Junior? Kind of B and C go together, right? But...
We approve them at the same...
Let's approve them separate.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move to approve Ordinance number fifteen dash nineteen, establishing small wireless... Small Wireless Facility Regulations.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Beck, seconded by Councilman Scopes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Item C.
So the next item on the agenda is the guidelines. So this is our standard. So when somebody brings an application in and says, "I want to put up, you know, a hundred of these small towers in your city," we say, "Great, our citizens will appreciate that." However, you know, they need to look nice. I don't know, Tyler, if you have access to any of those.
Sorry, what do you want?
The design guidelines for the small cell.
The attachment that's on our...
Well, it's, I'm not going to touch on much...
Yeah, I want to see the first page. Focus in on that next, yeah, that one right there. Look at that handsome guy up top there.
You want me to zoom in?
Yeah, zoom in on Sam Andrews there. I mean, he did not have those muscles when we went first grade to Brock Bank Elementary, but he must have gained them at Spanish Fork City, working on the electrical crew.
He's being active and healthy, isn't he?
He's being very active and healthy.
I'm glad somebody got that picture.
So these talk about how they'll go. We limit the height, we limit how they look, we limit colors. If you scroll down, Tyler, I'd like to show you kind of what we're looking at. So we're looking at a freestanding pole, and we're putting much of their equipment underground, as you can see here, and inside the pole. So I talk about the twenty-eight cubic feet we talked about with the ordinance and our design standards. We're forcing that as much as we can inside the pole and underground. So they may have a little vault down there next to their base. And we think that is really important for our residents. The other thing we're doing, and there's a couple of options, is you see our acorn streetlights around. We're, we think we can have them put a pole together that looks very similar to that, although it won't be identical because they serve different needs. They'll look very similar to that. So somebody driving to town hopefully wouldn't be able to tell a streetlight from one of these, other than, you know, at night the light comes on and on these they won't. There's even some possibility, though, we're not sure how likely that is at this point, that they could double. So one may have a light and have this on it. We really ought to thank our electric division for the work they did. Kelly and Tom did a lot of research. Much of this is borrowed from what Denver did. And as we looked at a lot of different places, we really liked what they had done, trying to make these look nicer and trying to fit in. And so that's the main thing I want to point out here, is how these all fit together. And the design guidelines are pretty detailed. There's about thirty pages of them, so I don't want to go through all of that. But did want to give you the idea of what we're talking about and how it all fits together and how these design guidelines address the details of the aesthetics and how they tie in with the ordinance. So questions about that? If not, then we need to do a motion to adopt this resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Junior.
I move that we approve Resolution nineteen dash fourteen, Adopting Small Wireless Infrastructure Design Guidelines.
Second. Motion by Councilman Scopes, seconded by Councilman Argyle, adopting Resolution nineteen fourteen, Adopting Small Wireless Infrastructure Design Guidelines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thanks, Junior. Item number D, Resolution, or item D, Resolution nineteen fifteen, Authorizing Public Works Director to Execute Long-Term Stormwater Management Agreements.
So we're going to give Chris a little bit more power here. And Chris likes power and light, but he feels a little awkward asking for it for himself. So I'm presenting on his behalf. But the EPA and the state have required us to implement long-term stormwater management agreements with our big industries. So like Costco, they have one, Lowe's will have one, our bigger businesses will have one. And it requires them to handle their stormwater on-site and it requires them to maintain it. And a lot of that is just doing some good landscaping. But to the extent they may have drains, they may have sumps, they may feed into some LID things, they've got to make sure those work. We have inspections for that. And as I've indicated, this is mandated by the EPA and the state. But the agreement is identical in every instance, other than to the party as their acreage. But it's the standard form that's been prepared and sent to us, says this is what you'll use. So because it's standard and you should have one attached, we're proposing that rather than bring every one of those to the council, that Chris, as the Public Works Director, can execute those. We think that makes a lot of sense. And it's efficient both for the businesses who need to do that and also for you, as you're not dealing with those trivial things, that you've looked at the form that is the same, which is fill in a few blanks, and then you don't have to look at the detail every time one of these comes out.
Thank you, Junior. Any questions for Junior on Resolution nineteen fifteen? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution nineteen fifteen. I'll make that motion. Motion, I move we approve Resolution nineteen fifteen, Authorizing the Public Works Director to Execute Long-Term Stormwater Management Agreements.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Mendenhall, seconded by Councilman Gordon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Onto number ten, Discussion, Item A, Wastewater Treatment Plant Risk Assessment. Our wastewater guy is here.
I would get to wait till the end.
Yeah.
Whole story.
Were you here to witness Brandon's compliment to you earlier?
Absolutely. Thank you. That's kind. I'll just give a brief introduction now, since time over to our consultant. Down at the treatment plant, perhaps one of the biggest things as I've gone down there and learned about it is we've got a broad range of infrastructure. Some of the earliest infrastructure was built in the mid-to-late fifties, and some of that's still in use. And in that environment, that gives a little bit of credit to how things have been run, that they're still going. But it also brings a bit of concern. We had some major upgrades in the mid-eighties. That is the bulk of the plant you see today. There were portions that were two thousand and six with some of the air rotor basins. But that kind of is where the plant sits. And we're sitting at a point where the state is having us look at upgrades for nutrient removal and things that are going to require us to make additions to the plant. We're also getting at a flow capacity as well as a treatment capacity. It's a good time to step back and go, "Okay, what do we do here?" One of the first steps we wanted to look at was assessing what we have, what shape it's in, and kind of where our life expectancy is in that. So I'll pass the time over to our consultant. We hired Waterworks Engineers to come in and work with our staff to really dive into the details inside each of the buildings, look at every piece of equipment. When was it installed? How has it been maintained? And what's the remaining life expectancy that we might expect? Which kind of can help, it's not a predictor necessarily of something's going to fail tomorrow, but it kind of gives us a risk analysis to kind of help us understand how much at risk are we? So with that, I'll turn the time over to Corey Christensen with Waterworks. And then I think Chris will wrap things up after Corey's done.
I'm Corey Christensen with Waterworks Engineers, and we were asked to go through and assess the facility. And one of the things that we were asked to do is take a systematic approach. And the thing with wastewater operators is that they're can-do people. And the great thing about can-do people is you very rarely will violate your permit because they make sure it doesn't happen. But often, they don't have a good way of communicating to council and management where they have issues and where they have trouble. And so we were asked to come in and take a systematic approach to go through and evaluate the facility and identify where the risks are and where we should be focusing our attention. I assume I can, awesome. So this, the system we use is one that's used throughout the Southwest. We use it in all of our, all the states we work in, been used on many plants in Utah as well. But essentially, you're going to identify the consequences of failure, what's going to happen if we fail, and then what is the likelihood? And you put it in a simple matrix and you look at it and say, "Well, if I have a high consequences if I fail and a high likelihood of failure, those are the items that I should identify first." And so it's a systematic approach to go through and evaluate these things and identify those two, those two criteria, and then put them on a chart. And that's what we've done with your plant. Essentially, what we do is we'll go through and sit down with your operators for several days and go through all the drawings of your plant. We'll identify every piece of equipment and then we'll put a, and then we'll go through and assess it according to these, to those two criteria. So when we look at consequence of the failure, we're looking at things like safety. If it fails, is somebody going to get hurt or even killed? If it has, if it's going to hurt somebody? This is like bridge cranes and safety equipment. If it has a high likelihood, if it fails, it could hurt somebody, we identify that. Permit compliance. If it fails, are we going to violate our permit? Redundancy. If it fails, is there another piece of equipment that can be turned on to take its place? Flexibility. If it fails, do my operators not have the ability to modify the operation of the plant in order to meet permit or to adjust and do the things they need to do? And then last, operational impacts. If it fails, is it going to cost my operators a lot of time and effort in order to solve the problem and fix and operate the plant until it comes back? So those are the ways we look at identifying consequences and we evaluate each one, give each one a score, and then those scores come together in order to put it on that matrix. So here's some pieces of equipment at your plant. We were asked to show you. So the digester, one of the things we saw is when the digester lid had its issues, the impact to your operators and the operations of the plant were significant. And so that was something that was not identified. When it did fail, it caused a lot of problems and cost the city some money in addressing that. Up at the top, you see a boiler. That boiler is a nineteen-eighties vintage boiler. It's in pretty bad shape. There's actually one put in more recently, but it has failed. And so they're using the older boiler right now and it's in relatively bad shape. You can see that at the bottom, that's a little actuator and there's a hole that's in it and you can just see that there's issues there with that. And when we look at that, the consequences of failure of your boiler is that your digester isn't going to work very well. You're going to have to, you're not going to be able to get your solids reduction and have to haul more solids. Those are the types of impacts it's going to have. And at the bottom, there's just piping that the operators have repaired to make sure it stays in service. But again, this is digester piping, so if your digestors, if you lose that pipe, you're unable to do the solids reduction that you need to do, you haul more solids. So there's impacts. So consequences of failure, we go through the system when we do that. Then we take an approach that goes through and tries to identify how likely is a piece of equipment or a structure to fail. And we start with standard, industry-understood life of a piece of equipment. Twenty years for a pump, fifty years for a concrete structure. And then we look at it. And so then we go through every piece of equipment and we say, "Okay, when was it installed? Identify the age. And if it had a fifty-year life and it's forty years old, then you'd say, 'Okay, it has ten more years of life.'" Then you adjust it for use. If it's a piece of equipment that runs regularly, a hundred percent of the time, twenty-four hours a day, then it basically is not adjusted. But if it's something that's only run maybe twenty percent of the time, then you extend its anticipated useful life longer because it's not being used. So you, at the end of that, you get what you would call a base useful life. And that tells you really, how many years should this piece of equipment or structure last? Does it have five more years in it? Does it have ten, based on industry standards? And then you take a couple of approaches and you adjust for either the condition of it or you adjust for the performance of it. And I'll talk about those in a few minutes. But at the end of this discussion, you get down to this that we use, we call it remaining useful life. And it's kind of a misnomer, but engineers, we have to work in units, right? We started with years, we multiply it, we have to end with years. So this number at the bottom can often be negative. You can actually say that I have negative ten years left on this equipment. And that is not telling you that it's going to fail ten years ago. It's telling you that you have a relatively high risk of failure. The more negative it goes, the more positive it is, then you're in good shape. And that's what it's trying to put together, is this kind of evaluation of what is my risk and identifying that risk. This is done very, with a lot of input from the operators. This is not something where a consultant comes in and tries to tell you, you know, the condition of a pump. And we can do the evaluation and put the system together, but this is done with the input of the operators and how they assess their plant. And so you go through and look at, as you do the assessment, you look at things like wear. At the top, you're seeing your STM air rotors. And you can see in that sprocket, there's a significant amount of wear on the spines that are sticking out. And then also down on the piece where the chain, you can see that there's some wear and some ruts that have been grooved into that. Those are the types of things we identify and say, "Okay, if we have wear, this is relatively, you know, moderate wear. This isn't something we would say is imminent failure, but we would say, 'Hey, there's wear there.'" There's other things that we look at, as well as, on the left, you see an MCC and a Headworks. And Headworks have corrosive gases. That's all there is to it. And corrosive gases and electrical equipment do not mix, they shouldn't mix. In fact, there might even be some code issues that protect us from doing things like this because the electrical equipment will wear, they'll corrode, and then they don't work anymore. And now your switches don't work and you can't turn on or off your equipment. So we identified things like the MCCs. The bottom is your clarifier that floated. I don't know if you know that clarifiers can float, but they can. And it floated. And so you can see the wears at the top, the water level is relatively high, where the wear's the bottom, the water's relatively low. That wear's supposed to be flat. And so you look at these types of wear issues and condition issues and you address those. And then you put them into an evaluation and we try to be systematic. You look at, the assessment of condition is based on visual inspection, you look at wear, you look at the renewal requirements. How much are the operators spending on maintenance for a piece of equipment? If they're spending a lot, then that's telling us that they're, that it's got some condition issues. If they're spending what's expected, then you're okay. And then corrective maintenance, not just maintenance, but how often are you having to go in and say, "Replace a seal on a pump or replace a motor on a pump." Things that's more corrective, not routine maintenance. After we get through that evaluation, that condition will then adjust our useful life. The other thing that you need to look at, and I've kind of blown on to the, blown up onto the bottom of the chart, is this is a branched part. You get the base life and then you branch it. One way is to look at is condition. Condition is going to reduce the useful life a certain amount based on condition. The other thing you need to look at is performance. You may have equipment in your plant that has a certain capacity. And if it only has a capacity of, say, five, and you are at five, then its useful life is pretty much at the end and you're going to have to do something to expand it. Other things, you may have equipment that's suitable for, like say, your STM air rotors. Your STM air rotors are very well-suited for treating typical wastewater. But when it comes to removing nutrients, they actually work against you. So when you start looking at nutrient regulations coming down the line, we'll look at it and say, "Okay, you're going to have a nutrient regulation that's going to hit you here." Well, your STM air rotor is going to work against you hitting that. So its useful life kind of ends when that regulation hits. And so we look at those things as well. So you kind of branch, and then at the end, you get down to the lower of those two, either condition or performance, and it impacts you. And at the end, you get to that remaining useful life. And that is your assessment of risk. So now in the evaluation, we've gone through and we've said, in this evaluation, we've gone through and we've done that. We've gone through and identified the consequences of failure of every piece of equipment in your plant. And then we've gone through and evaluated, what's the risk of failure for every single piece of equipment in your plant, likelihood? And then you come out and based on our work with the city, we established, okay, what criteria are we going to use? If it's less than negative ten years of useful life, we consider that high risk. And if it's more than, more than two or three years, we consider that low risk. And so we establish a scale and then we put your plant into a, into a matrix like this. And this is, and this is the results of your plant. So based on the work that we did, we have category one or ranking one is the stuff that's in that top-left corner of the box. It's stuff that's high risk of failure and high consequences of failure. And then we went in and we costed the plant based on replacing in kind. So if you wanted to keep the exact same process, the exact same plant, sizing, everything the same, we just went and costed out all those pieces of equipment that are in the plant. And that comes to about eight million dollars of your plant is right now in that high-risk, high-consequences-of-failure box. And that is all based on, you know, where your operators have assessed those things and adjusted them. Then you go to the number two category, which is planning. You should be planning within kind of a five-year horizon, maybe a little bit longer, maybe a little bit shorter, based on where the city is as far as their budgets and funding and such for planned upgrades and where their planning is. But in there, a bulk of your plant is kind of in that stage where it's been in service for maybe thirty, forty years. It's getting to the point where it's starting to show significant wear. It may, it may be in, it may be that its capacity or its ability to meet the future regulations, which are coming up in a couple of years, is being met. And so you're looking at all those things. And so that's about thirty million dollars of your current plant that is in that kind of second category. And then the bottom category is stuff that's more of a, say, five-to-ten-year planning horizon that you should be looking at and saying, "Okay." And there's about another six million out there. The, the idea of this system is to, is to develop a way to communicate these things so you can, you can address the things right away. And then as you start assessing this and using this tool, which your operators, I, I expect will do, they'll continue to assess the equipment and such. And, and as things get replaced, then they get moved down and now they have a forty-year life again. You can, you can keep things in that category three, but sometimes when you haven't done this in the past, you need to catch up a little bit. And that's what we're showing with the information here. I hope I was, was not too, I was told to be succinct, so I hope I was not too succinct and, and it's clear on, on what we've done and where we stand.
Important stuff. Thank you for coming. Thanks for the information. Thanks for some of the bad news. That's big numbers there.
Yeah, nobody's clapping. I'm watching.
Thanks Cory and Cory. This, this is coupled, so this is just our existing plant as it is. And assuming you replace it as it is, you don't add capacity, you don't meet increasing regulation. And so, there's another aspect here is we have increasing regulation. The, the state is saying, well, you need to treat to a higher level. We're concerned about Utah Lake and nutrients and, and algae blooms and, and we'll need to do a higher level of treatment, which might make us need to change processes at the plant. And maybe instead of treating a, a certain way, we, we change altogether and we treat another way, which better takes out nitrogen and phosphorus and some of the nutrients that the state is, is telling us that we need to start taking out. So, knowing all of this is coming, we, we've been doing some things that I, I think is really helpful. Three years ago, we started talking to the city council about these issues and we started raising rates over and above what was needed to run the system. Now, because of that, we have over eleven million dollars in cash reserves in the wastewater budget, anticipating some of these changes. We didn't want to jump in and fix a bunch of things in our plant now, if really the smartest thing to do would be to go another direction with what kind of treatment, because there might be a better way to treat for the upcoming regulations that are coming. And then also, what those regulations would be has been in flux. And, and, and now we're starting to understand better from the state exactly what will be required from us. So, all those things have been coming down the pipe, no pun intended. And what we have done is we've said, okay, we would like to know this in case it would influence what process we elect to go forward. If, if sticking with the system we have now is going to cost upwards of forty to fifty million dollars, maybe going and starting a whole new process for sixty million dollars would be cost-effective. And so, what we wanted to do is, is have this assessment done in preparation for four different studies. The first study was a regional treatment plant study, where the state basically came to Provo, Springville, Mapleton, Spanish Fork and said, if you will take a year to study regionalization of all of your plants, we will give you an extra year on your permit. Now, an extra year on our permit, and it actually ended up being a year and three months, would save the city upwards of two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-thousand dollars in chemicals that we'd have to buy once our permit is enforced. And so, spending seventy or eighty thousand dollars on a study to save that much money was really a, a good deal that was offered to the city. And, and that is underway. I just read the draft version of that and it, it's indicating that it likely doesn't make sense to regionalize and that the recommendation is that the city would likely be best off just upgrading their plant where it is now. But that will be finalized in the next few months. But the study that, or the studies that we are really excited about is, is a month or a couple of months ago, we went out to RFP and we selected the three top firms that we could find on treatment plant design. And we've awarded small contracts to all three of them to take this data, which, which Cory has put together, and then evaluate that based on the upcoming regulations and all of the processes and new technology that's out there today. And recommend what would be best, what they feel like would be best for the city going forward. If we, if we went to this process and we phased it in this way and spent this much money on these different years, this would meet your regulations and meet the future growth of the city and those needs. And getting those three different views and recommendations from these three different firms, we could then interview them and with them, talking back and forth, decide which one of those three firms' proposals we like the best. Once we do that, then we can then take the other two proposals, which we've paid for their development, and we can give them to our selected proposal and, and say, hey, integrate some of those ideas that have come from those other firms and let's make the best plan going forward. And then, only then do we start to spend this money that we have saved and likely will have to bond for, to make the improvements to our plant. Cory's done a great job of, of creating a ten-year capital improvement plan with our budget and estimating where our rates will be in the next ten years because of this. And it looks like the projected rates that we'll have in Spanish Fork will be much lower than the projected rates in, in the other cities around us, just because we've gotten the jump on collecting the money and saving up cash reserves, as well as hopefully some, some great technology will be proposed and, and maybe we won't have to spend as much money if we, if we kind of take a measured approach and do it. And hopefully the plant holds together, holds together until we can implement that. Any questions on this? This is just for information.
They sell JB Weld at Harbor Freight in town. We might need to get an account there.
That's right. Cory has a lot of JB Weld. So, we might just have to use it for a little bit longer, but.
Thanks for your foresight on this, Chris.
I think, I think really Cory, having Cory down there and, and really taking a hard look at things and, and I'm just really grateful for him being down there. He's done a great service to the city.
Good work.
And Dennis. Dennis did a great job for us. He, he really kept things going and, and meeting the permit.
He's still on speed dial, too.
Yeah, right. So, anyway, I, I have the next item too, if you want me to go on.
Any questions for Chris?
On this one, just a discussion item, but.
I was just going to say that the Water Quality Board has made mention that, that if some, you know, if we wanted to request monies from them, Orem City just recently has, and at a rate that's less than a percent of borrowing money. And I believe theirs was to the tune of eighty million dollars because they're looking at some technologies. So, anyway, as we look at some of that and the bonding options and things as we go forward, Cory, Cory was good to come up to Salt Lake for our last meeting. We meet every month up there and, and so it's good that he's jump, jumping up on that as well with Dr. Erica Gaddis and some of those people that he's communicating with up there to make sure that they know that Spanish Fork's making some upgrades and some changes that, you know, they can help out.
Yeah. Well, and that's one nice in the state. We're not the only city facing this. In fact, there's quite a few cities. And, and I, I was able to look at similar studies like this for some other cities and, and this is fairly typical. And so, I think, I think there's going to be a lot of changes in Utah and the wastewater industry. A lot of cities are looking to things and the state's trying to help out with loans and low-interest-rate loans and, and support so that cities can afford to do these things.
You know anybody appointed by the governor on that board that could?
I don't, yeah. He'll refuse himself.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks, Chris. Item B, Aeroplanes, Trains and Automobile Funds.
Okay, so, we have an event every year at the airport, Aeroplanes, Trains and Automobiles. And, and it usually makes a pretty good profit. Last year, we, we, we didn't do as many events and so we didn't make as much last year as we normally do, but, but we intend to bring those events back this year. And one of the things that we have done with this event is we've used it to fund half of the fuel for our Young Eagles program. The Young Eagles program is where the city offers a hundred to two-hundred free rides to children in, in our area between ages of eight and fifteen, so that they can go up in a plane, fly around Spanish Fork and, and land and, and experience that for free. And it's kind of on a sign-up, first-come, first-served basis. And what we have is a bunch of pilots at the airport who volunteer their planes and their time to do that. But what we've tried to do is pay for half of their fuel costs. And, and, and we've tried to pay for that out of, if you will, some of the proceeds of, of this planes, trains and automobiles program. What, what we would like to do is continue that now that Spanish Fork City is, is the sole owner of, of the airport with the city council's sanction. We don't, we, we, we want to do it under your direction, but we would suggest continuing to do that. But also, this year, have Aeroplanes, Trains and Automobiles benefit this proposed Halverson Educational Center. The kind of a, a memorial to the candy bomber, Gail Halverson. But would also be a great educational center for, for our city, for the schools around in our city and, and be able to be a, a, a benefit to the airport. It would be right at the entrance to the airport and be a beautiful building to kind of make our airport better. And so, with that, our airport board and our, and our airport manager have been brainstorming ideas that they could raise some extra money through this event for that. And also, they feel like if they can say that after we pay for half the fuel of the Young Eagles program, which is kind of a community benefit type thing, that all of what's left over after we paid the bills for the event, we go to the Halverson Center, we feel like we can get a lot more business support for our, our event. And, and it's, it's a nice talking point as we go in and ask for businesses, especially there on the airport, to participate and to donate some things. And so, we'd like to ask for that and then throw out some ideas. We feel like there's a candy drop event planned for, for this event, for, for Aeroplanes, Trains and Automobiles, where Gail Halverson himself will ride up in a helicopter and he'll drop the candy like he did over Berlin. And, and then a bunch of kids, it's a really popular event, a bunch of kids will go and they'll collect the, the candy like the Berlin children did. But, but what we thought we could do is something similar to what we did, not in this event last year, but in a, in another event last year. And, and maybe by silent auction, auction off a ride in that helicopter with the candy bomber when he goes and drops off the plane. So, that's one idea that we felt like we could promote. And then some of the other options that we could either do a silent auction or some sort of a raffle for would be a ride in a Lamborghini. A ride in the world's fastest plane of that class, which I, I don't understand this exactly well.
Yep, yep.
But it's called the Draco, that plane, the Paddy's plane. And it's very famous across the world. It's one of some national or international races and, and perhaps we could auction off or raffle off a ride in the Draco plane. And then, I'm finally ready for that plane, Tyler, and it's not there.
What's that?
It's been there the whole time.
No, it's there. We're just catching up. Always catching up.
There's Draco.
Oh, there's Draco.
That's Draco. Let's go.
And then, we have a, we have someone who has what's called a T-six, which is a, a World War II plane that we think we could, would, would be able to give them to donate two rides in this plane. The first ride we had auctioned off or raffled off. But the second ride, what they would like to do is have a contest at the city library where children could come in and write an essay of why they think their grandpa or grandma or whoever deserves a ride in this plane. And then, at the Aeroplanes, Trains and Automobiles, we would award that essay contest and allow whoever the essay was about to, to go and ride in the plane. And we feel like that would give some good publicity and, and be a positive thing to the community. So, I guess with, with all of that, we just wanted to make sure we're going in a direction that you like now that we're wholly under your sponsorship or, or direction. And, and if, if that's okay, we'll proceed. Any?
Sounds cool.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So, I think, is that love? One is dead. Don't worry about it, Tyler.
So, all the things that Chris mentioned are, are great ideas and one of the challenges that we have, being a fundraising mechanism, is donations are not just, you know, like you would do if you were donating to something, but we have to go through different processes, of course, which require public hearing and the approval of the council. So, one thing for the airport group that is always tough is, as successful business people and many of them business owners in their own right, if they want to do something, they just do it. And that's one of the greatest things about this country. But we can't just donate. So, if they do certain things, they need to do whatever they need to do to follow the applicable requirements that we have. If we're the donation gatherer, and then when it comes time for us to give that donation away, we'll, we will have a political, not a political, a financial and public process that we'll have to follow. But one thing that I wanted to make sure that Chris did, which he did tonight, is make sure that you're comfortable with the concept of us potentially being that money collector and then comfortable with, at the end of it all, that whatever we say we're going to do, we will eventually donate through that public process. So, thanks.
Awesome. Thank you, Brandon. Really quick, before you make your motion, if I could, just, and this is more of a discussion up here to the, to the body, to the city council, kind of a, a point of personal privilege, if you will, but because it'll be in the news, I wanted to make a mention of it in a public meeting. You probably all know, I think the city staff knows as well, that I've, for the last few months, have sat on the Good Governance Advisory Board that has been studying the, the form of government in the county, in Utah County. And a lot of great people that sat on that board along with me, a lot of local people, our local Senator Henderson, and I could name off more than a few of them, but Rex Facer, Professor Facer, Spanish Fork resident, right?
He was on the library board in fact.
Library board at one time?
So, he is.
His wife is?
Or, no, yes, that's right. His wife, yeah.
Political professor at BYU, along with Cameron Martin from Utah Valley University, were instructed to head up that, that board, along with senators, multiple senators of the state, representatives, mayors, Mayor of Santaquin, Mayor Cofusi of Provo, myself, Clint Betts, a, a Spanish Fork resident that heads up the Silicon Slopes Organization, other people that have been involved in politics longer than, than I've been alive. But, but some, some Representative Moss from out in Saratoga Springs, just good, good people that are out-serving their community. And, and we were asked to sit on this board to basically study the, the question of moving the form of government from a three-member commission, which it currently is, to a, to a part-time council and one full-time mayor of the county. So, went through many meetings, sometimes weekly meetings, to discuss this issue. Basically, I wanted to bring it up in a, in a public setting, again, because it's in the news, but some of our other cities in the county have passed resolutions. We're, we're not asking for that here or anything. But just so the public knows and the council knows, today, the, what's going to be in the news is an effort to block that recommendation, which might I say was a unanimous recommendation from the whole Good Governance Board. And two of the three commissioners supported the idea of, the path of putting this on the, on the ballot for this year's election, to basically have the residents of Utah County vote to see if they wanted to change the form of government, government in the county. Commissioner Lee, you can read in these reports, was part of a petition in the last minute that, that stopped that from being able to happen. The, the part that I want to maybe put in the public record here is there's been some level that you'll, that you can see from the, the here is there's been some level that you can see from the video of the commission meeting today, that there was an agenda by some or motives by those on the Good Governance Board. I just want to let you know, as a body that we deliberate, and we do this out in front of each other all the time, and that's what that Good Governance Board did as well. There's... I got no impression that anybody was trying to run for a position on that Good Governance Board, which is what's been alluded to, and maybe part of the reasons of why it's trying to be stopped here in the eleventh hour, really the eleventh and a half hour. So disappointed in that, but I'm excited for the future we have as relations with the county. We've got a great relationship with Utah County and have for many, many years through many, many commissioners. And I feel we can get to that place again, even though that this last disappointing part, I think eventually we will get to a point where the government, form of government changes, which will be better for, I believe, in my opinion, the county and all of us cities as a whole. So I encourage you to get involved. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me. I know our city staff and all of you guys work closely with the county as well, so you guys are in touch with all that as well. So feel free to ask us if you're a resident and have any questions towards that. Sorry, Brandon, for taking that much time.
No, appreciate your work on that. I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Second.
Oh.
I was probably late doing this, but I talked with Scott Ilet.
Ilet?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
We needed... We didn't realize that we need to talk to the council. Maybe we don't need to, but we're involved in that project up on Powerhouse Road where the CUP is bringing the big pipeline down, and they've had the road closed and things like that. And the...
You want to come up to the mic real quick? Sorry.
Don't miss who you are.
Did you hear that whole time?
Yeah, you get some mic time. Yep. Tell us your name, sir.
Not that I wanted to come up and talk.
Yeah, that's all right.
I was smart enough to take off my Red Devil hat before I came to Bear River, my straw hat at Bear River last week.
That's all right.
But I've got my boots on. Anyway, are all of you aware of the project they're doing up there?
Yes.
It's quite... We own a forty-acre parcel up there that we've had for a lot of years. And back quite a while ago, they had a situation where the city put in a new well up the canyon, and a lot of the wells along Powerhouse went dry. And so the Luella Hall and Ivan Hall, I don't know if you remember those names.
Oh, I did. That was my scout master.
Oh, really?
I picked more apples than Ivan's Orchard than...
Yeah.
Ever will again.
She was an old Springville girl, by the way.
Yeah, Luella.
But anyway, they put together a group that put a twelve-inch water line down there. And we had five water connections on it. We was hoping we'd get three more sometime. But one of the problems we've had is that there's going to be a moratorium as soon as they put the asphalt down. And that's probably going to be by the end of this month, is what they're telling us. And after that, we can't get in, we can't cut that asphalt. And the five water connections that we had are up in places now that we can't use them. And we wanted to change... We talked to Mark Reinhold, who's over the CUP part of it, and he said, "We'll just go in and get an excavation permit, and we'll bring these out." We're not asking for three more at this stage, but just to move those down a little because we've got some people interested in building homes up there now. But they don't want to wait for five years to have to do that. And Mark had just told us to come down and fill out an excavation permit. WW Clyde, the contractor there, said they have the type of... I guess there's not too many subcontractors that have that kind of permit that can go in and do work on a city line and stuff like that, but they do have that. And they just told us, "We'll get an excavation permit, and we'll move it over, and we'll still only have the five permits, but we really need to change them, and we don't want to have to wait for five years to change it." So the question is...
Chris, do you want to come address...
He's...
Okay, perfect.
Meet with Chris Thompson's department, the Water Department?
Uh-huh.
We'll...
I didn't catch your name.
Calvin Byrd. I'm sorry.
Calvin, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I thought I was on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
We're glad you came.
Glad I came, too. Anyway, we're just to check and see if you would okay the fact that we just have WW Clyde put in three others down closer to the... It'd be the south end. The county's telling us we can't build up on the north end right now without having a sewer in. And so we really, we can't use those water permits at this stage. But if we could just get them out so it's underneath where the asphalt is, why we could change those. It wouldn't change the number we've got right now, but at least we'd be able to use them. It's been a long time. We, at one time, tried to build a golf course for you guys. Did you know that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll get you with Chris and his department offline here and...
You think we could do that, then, and get a permit?
Depends on how the contract reads.
Pardon?
It's going to depend on how the contract reads. So let's just work on that.
So he's been working with our water department on this, and our response has been that we'll follow the contract. Obviously, if we're just moving some things around, I think we'd work with them. But we just want to be clear on what he's asking and then follow the contract on that, so.
Okay.
Perfect.
So we could get an excavation permit to just bring them out there?
We'd have to look at the contract and see what exactly you're asking, and then we'll verify that. So I don't think we can say yea or nay right here.
Okay. Well, we'd appreciate your help.
Thanks, Calvin.
Long time.
Yeah, thanks for coming. We appreciate you.
I do have my grandpa was John Banks Money.
All right.
In a name like that, Banks and...
And the money.
I'm even a cousin to your mayor. His dad, Ted, taught me how to run a backhoe.
Boy.
And we know a lot of good Spanish Fork people.
We won't hold that against you, you know, mayor.
Thanks, Calvin.
Thanks, Calvin. Thanks, Chris.
Motion to go into closed session. Stans.
Motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck to go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.